We'll open this morning's series of work sessions. I would say, first and foremost, we are honored to have Representative Wassac here, President, who traveled a great distance at extreme expense to come all the way here and then headed to Ellensburg next, which is another long drive. You are a road warrior, sir, and we appreciate the time you've taken just to come here to make a presentation to us. So, without further ado, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself? Because this is recorded and for the public's information as well, at least a summary of what Wassac is, and, you know, just a nutshell of...
Absolutely. Thank you so very much for having me. I really appreciate the invitation, and you're working to schedule me some time today. My name is Mark Ozias, and I'm a Clallam County Commissioner, and I'm currently serving as the second Vice President of the Washington Association of Counties. And, again, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here today. The Association of Counties has existed here in our state for over 100 years, and it really does quite a variety of different support activities for counties around the state. And, of course, it's the primary support organization for elected county commissioners and council members, but it also serves as the umbrella organization for a number of county affiliates, like the county road engineers, local public health officials, the county administrators, solid waste managers, human services administrators, IT directors, planning administrators, clerks of the board, et cetera. Wassac is a close partner to Waco, which is the statewide organization that represents all of the other electeds in counties. And the work that Wassac does is really very broad. As you know, there is a fair amount of effort spent on legislative advocacy, both at the state and federal level. That is accomplished at the state level through the Legislative Steering Committee and at the federal level through the Federal Issues Committee. There is, of course, a lot of training and education that goes on, both for newly elected officials and training for all of the new things that come down the pike for all of us who aren't newly elected officials but are working to absorb new information all the time. Wassac is a hub for information, for research, for resources. Of course, Wassac holds the Strategic Litigation Fund and engages in litigious advocacy, I guess you could say, when that's necessary, on behalf of counties, supports affiliates, and works with business partners to try and affect programs where counties can work together to save costs. So, there are a lot of examples of benefits of the organization, and I wanted to try and just highlight a couple of those today. And I'll note, too, and this is up on the PowerPoint, and you each have a paper copy of the courthouse briefing document here. It really provides a pretty substantive overview of the entirety of the operations of the organization. And then the second handout, which is the end-of-session report, is more specific to the legislative advocacy and process. So, please do take time to review those. But just a few of the legislative successes and issues that the association has been working on, on behalf of all members, include recently the 1115 waiver, which is the 90-day Medicaid waiver for people who are in county jails. That's been a significant amount of work, both at the state and local level. But as county jails are starting to, just at the beginning phases of trying to figure out how to work with the healthcare authority to take advantage of that new revenue stream, it's going to be a significant improvement for, really, all partners. We've worked on some sort of bread-and-butter issues, including federal funds, transportation swaps, sort of swapping federal dollars for state dollars to make it easier for counties to use federal dollars. Since there are so many reporting requirements that are attached to those, you know, we have to be very careful about when we utilize them, so just some additional flexibility is very helpful. More recently, we've been successful in advocating for additional classes for corrections officers, a bunch of new corrections officers academies. So, we're really, the organization really works on issues, both large and small, that are all very practical and important to all counties. Of course, we have virtual assemblies, many Mondays, which is a great opportunity for ongoing education and connection with other commissioners. Some of the research that the association has done recently includes a significant amount of work that's gone into looking at some of the property tax shifts that are related to renewable energy installations and other taxing issues. Of course, I think you're all aware of all of the work that the association has done with regard to indigent defense and working to try and encourage/force the state to do a better job of partnering with counties to help to support that expense. Of course, you know, that's something that we've worked at, both in the legislative advocacy level and in the litigation realm. The association has been very focused over the last few years on ensuring that foundational public health services are grounded in county government as that program grows throughout the state. And even some of the business partnerships, you know, I can speak personally to one of them. There's an organization called Cash Vest that the Association of Counties has been working with. It works with individual counties to help them manage their cash flow. And so, our treasurer has been working with Cash Vest for the last year, so it's been a very positive experience. So, there's really just a wide variety of services and supports and advocacy opportunities that are available through the association. Recently, there's been a lot of change and a lot of challenges at Wassac, and part of the reason why I'm here today is to talk a little bit about that. It's really important that all members across the state understand what's going on, have the opportunity to ask questions, and are prepared to be involved, you know, certainly on an ongoing basis, but certainly here over the next few months, because it's a really, really important time for the organization. There's, as you may know, we have always been an association of 39 counties. For the last couple of years, the three largest counties, Kings, Snohomish, and Pierce, have started to have some concerns related to the amount of dues that they pay and the amount of people who they represent as compared to the amount of influence that they have within the organization. And so, that's been an ongoing topic of conversation for the last couple of years as we've worked to figure out what it looks like to really address those concerns, but to do it in a way that protects the interests of small counties and medium-sized counties and all counties. You know, how do we create an organization that has value and meaning to every county who we exist to support? And it's really, it's been difficult work, but I'm really happy to report that I think we're making very substantial progress, and that's what I want to take a couple minutes to talk about next. This is all happening, of course, at a time of leadership transition within the Association of Counties. A longtime executive director, Eric Johnson, has just retired. We were in the midst of a search for a new permanent executive director when some of the financial uncertainties that relates to the largest counties and their participation caused us to decide that we needed to take a little bit of time to make sure that we understood what the organization was going to look like moving forward and whether we were still going to be an organization of 39 counties or not. And so, we pivoted and decided to name an interim director to help us manage through this transition. So, as of the last day of May, Eric Johnson is formally retired, and our interim director is a gentleman named Derek Young. He is a former Pierce County Council member and is someone who's very familiar with the Association of Counties. He has hit the ground running and is really, really focused on making sure that we can move forward as a whole organization. So, the concerns that the largest counties have had have resulted in King County not paying any dues for this year. So, King County is currently not a member of the Association of Counties. We are still working very closely with King County because their participation is important, but currently, they're not a member of the Association of Counties, and Snohomish and Pierce Counties have both only paid a partial amount of dues for this year. And that speaks to the level of concern that they've had and to the importance of all of the work that we've been doing to try and address some of those concerns. So, we started by focusing on the Legislative Steering Committee, because that legislative advocacy process is what's most important to many, many counties, and that was the, really, the crux of the most important work that needed to be done. So, at the Legislative Steering Committee, that group was empowered through some bylaw changes that the entire organization made last year to think differently about their process. And so, they worked very hard and adopted some new rules to ensure that all members have the opportunity to get priorities on the legislative agenda. They adopted, for the first time, a proportional voting process for a portion of those priorities, and there's more information about that. I can answer questions if you'd like, but it was a really successful new effort this year that the entire Legislative Steering Committee felt pretty darn good about. The retreat was just held a couple of weeks ago, and the Legislative Steering Committee adopted a relatively aggressive and broad agenda for the upcoming legislative session. The priorities that were adopted include focusing on new county revenue, focused on funding for indigent defense, increased funding particularly for rural county coroners, and requires the state to comply, and the state and the feds, to comply with state and local development requirements for local permitting agencies. We're going to be focusing on creating accountability in the behavioral health continuum by improving contractual standards between the healthcare authority and managed care organizations. Going to focus, of course, on access to housing and affordability, and funding for the preservation and maintenance of the county transportation system. That's a very broad agenda, and there was a lot of conversation about whether that should be narrowed or not, and ultimately, the group felt like those were all really important efforts to focus on. So, the professional staff is currently strategizing as to how to work on that. But it was the first time that the Legislative Steering Committee has utilized, has adopted and utilized a proportional voting system, and everyone really felt like it went quite well. We were able to ensure that every county had a vote and had a voice, and ensured that the largest counties had the opportunity to ensure that their priorities are elevated along with everyone else's. In tandem with all of this Legislative Steering Committee work, we've been doing a lot of work on the organization's bylaws. The President of the Association, Lisa Janiky, from Skagit County, has been leading a bylaws committee, which has been working for about a year and a half now on a series of recommendations. And we have a special meeting scheduled for the association on June 26. It's going to be in Yakima. Of course, there will be a virtual option. And the express purpose of this special meeting in June is to encourage members to vote in favor of adopting all of the bylaw changes that the committee's been working on. So, if it's all right, I'd like to take just a moment and highlight some of those. We are recommending that we add a couple of seats to the organization's executive committee, namely, that would be adding seats for elected county executives in counties with a population of over 750,000, or a representative from the executive's office to try and strengthen those connections to counties where the legislative effort and the executive effort are separate from each other. Last year, we changed the definition of active membership to require dues be paid by June 30th, and the intent behind that was to provide clarity as to who gets to vote when it comes time to set the legislative agenda. And because this year, we've been working so hard with particularly Pierce and Snohomish Counties, they have been very actively and positively engaged with the organization to try and work through some of these challenges. They have both paid a partial portion of their dues this year, and we believe that we are on track with both of those counties to get to full dues payment and hopefully reengage King County as early as next year. But in order to do that, we would like to recommend an adjustment to that June 30th date. We're going to be, we will be finalizing this at a meeting on Friday, but what we're expecting to recommend to the membership for adoption at this June meeting is an adjustment to require that 50% of a county's dues be paid by June 30th. That would ensure that Pierce and Snohomish County can continue to be active members and productive members of this conversation as we move through the rest of the year. The organization is considering a dues cap to reduce the heavy dependence on the few largest counties. King County's dues are already capped, so that's a mechanism that we're considering adopting a little bit more broadly. And we're really, really believe that this suite of changes, along with all of the other work that we've been doing, is going to strengthen the organization in a number of ways, not only by ensuring that we are a whole county family, but also by really, it's caused us to really make sure that we're focusing on the value of this organization, and what does the value of the organization to the smallest county look like, and what's the value of the organization to the largest county. So, I think it's been a really positive exercise. In addition to the legislative effort, many counties really look to the Strategic Litigation Fund as an important aspect of the Association of Counties' work. So, we're certainly going to continue to focus on that effort. And as we're looking at dues and assessments, just big picture, one of the things we're thinking about is how do we create or evolve a due structure so that we have enough base dues that we're able to cover the broad work that the organization needs to do, but also allow counties to really focus our limited resources on the aspects of work that Wassac does that are most important to your county. So, we're looking forward to that conversation on June 26. So, again, I am personally a big believer in the benefits of the Association of Counties. This is my ninth year as a Commissioner, and it took me a few years to get myself involved in Wassac, because there's, you know, it takes a while to learn a little bit about your own county and about the job. And I wish that I had started engaging with Wassac a little bit sooner, personally, because it can be, you know, certainly a very isolating job in some ways, even on a council of five, where two of you can speak to each other without being a quorum. You know, we all have different areas of focus and expertise that we develop over the time, over the course of time, and it can be such an isolating job in some ways. So, having a group of people who understand what you're doing and who have expertise to share is really, really important. And as the association has really built out its professional staff over the last few years to support all of the important priorities that counties have and will continue to have, I just feel personally really motivated to try and figure out what it looks like to have an effective, successful organization moving forward. So, with that, I would love to answer any questions that you have. Again, I thank you so much for the time today. It's a real pleasure to be here to talk a little bit about the Association of Counties and the work that we're doing, and to really encourage you all to attend either virtually or in person the June 26 meeting, and to support the changes that the bylaws committee has been working so diligently to accomplish. And thank you.
So, thanks for all of that, and again, thank you so much for taking the time and effort to come down and meet with us. So, let me first ask, are there questions or comments?
Yes, I have one, Chair.
Go ahead, Karen.
I would just like to echo what Gary Medvigi just said, that we totally welcome you and we're so glad that you're here. It's obvious that you are a fountain of Wassac knowledge, and we appreciate your sharing that with us. I have a question on the priorities that were decided upon. One of the things that is important to Clark, and I think maybe we're not alone in that regard, is jail funding. And I wondered, why is it that that did not emerge as a priority, and what do you see for that support in the future by Wassac?
Yes, thank you so much for that question. At the, of course, this last session was a short session. The long session previous to that, we were successful in securing some funding for a statewide jail study to really help us and help the legislature understand the level of investment that is going to be needed, both in physical infrastructure and in jail staffing, in order for counties to successfully continue to do this function of local government. And so, that study is underway. We anticipate being able to utilize that information to really work closely with the legislature to help them. We don't think they understand the level of investment that is necessary, and so, really trying to help them understand what we're talking about and why we thought was a really important first step. In the meantime, we have been working on some other aspects of trying to improve the way that jails are operating. For example, the advocacy for all of the additional classes for corrections officers was something that we worked hard on this time, so, as well as the jail Medicaid waiver. So, while we're working on developing more information about what the situation looks like across the state on a practical level, we're trying to work on revenue streams, healthcare support, and more resource for corrections officers.
Thank you, and you know that we support you completely in your efforts along that line. It's so needed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember.
Go ahead. Councilor Marshall.
Thank you. We really appreciate you being here. I'd just like to echo that as well. I'm grateful to Wassac. I've been on the job for about a year and a half, and that initial training was so welcome, and it's not just the training, it's the opportunity to just talk informally with people who've got, they're new on the job, they've had years of experience. It's really, really valuable. A lot of the work, really all of the work, I think that you do, dovetails a lot with the priorities that we have, and I think the Medicaid, I just want to put a star by that, is very important, and the indigent defense. I would just suggest there may be some opportunities in the future related to the opioid settlement funds for some collaborative efforts as that rolls out and we learn more about what's working and what isn't. And as you, I appreciate all the work you're doing with all of the counties to keep us all together. At this point, King County is not participating in any of the legislative priorities setting at this time?
That's correct. King County has had no formal participation this year because they are currently not a dues-paying member. However, we have worked very hard, as have a number of folks from within King County government, to ensure that we're continuing to talk to each other and understand what we can do to bring King County back into the fold. But in terms of this year's legislative priorities, King County played no role in helping to set those.
Do you think that the issue is mostly the contribution that they've been making is so more than the other counties, or is it a matter of issues or some combination of both?
You know, it's a great question, and I think really it's a combination of both. If you look at the association's due structure, and there's some information in the briefing report to put some detail to that, but it's pretty easy to see that a significant preponderance of the organization's dues come from those three largest counties, because the way that the dues work is there's a base dues for all counties and then a population-based component. And, you know, we all understand the increasing pressures on county government and on the dollars that we spend, and so, I think that it's been very important. What we've heard from the large counties is just what we hear from the small counties, that we want to make sure that the priorities that are important to us are heard and elevated and supported within the organization. And a lot of that comes down to the legislative steering effort, and there, I think, were a couple of cycles where the largest counties, and certainly King County, felt like the priorities that were most important to them were not shared by the rest of the group and not sufficiently supported. And, you know, that's a problem, because certainly, you know, most of the state's population lives in King County, not most, but, you know, that's the most populous county. And, you know, each of those council members represents a significant number of people, and it's important to recognize that. And so, they felt like they were not getting sufficient value for their contribution and decided that they needed to make some different decisions. And, you know, when I look back a little bit at some of the history, I think that this has been something that has been, you know, needed to be addressed probably for quite a while, and it's unfortunate that it has come to the head that it has. However, again, that has really prompted a huge amount of work that has been focused on what does, what does it look like to make sure that we have an association that provides value to every county, whether you're the smallest or the largest? And so, that's, you know, we've been working to, on the proportional voting project to ensure that in the legislative arena, large counties have a fair opportunity to make sure that their concerns are elevated on the dues effort. It's important for the organization, too, to make sure that we have a due structure that's not so heavily weighted toward just a few counties. You know, we need to spread our, you know, spread that burden out a little bit more broadly, and that's partially to other counties and partially looking at new business partnerships and other support services and other lines of revenue that can supplement the dues that counties pay.
Well, I encourage you to continue with that struggle. I think it's worthy and that we are stronger together. And as you've described it, I formerly served on a conservation district board, and much smaller scale, but similar in the struggles to make sure everybody is represented and they have a process where, at the local level, they decide what their priorities are, and it has a vetting process up the chain. It involves a lot of talking.
It does, and, you know, there was a lot of uncertainty going into this year's legislative planning effort as to how it was going to work, how were members going to feel, how are the smaller counties going to react to a proportional voting when it's utilized? And I'm really happy to report that we, the Legislative Steering Committee surprised ourselves a little bit, I think, with how well it went, given how nervous we were at the beginning. And it is so important for all of us to be able to carry each other's water. And if we have those positive relationships, if a King or a Pierce or a Snohomish County Council person has the ability to interact with and influence legislators in their realm on behalf of, you know, of Stevens or Ponderay County Commissioner and vice versa, if a smaller county has the opportunity to do some advocacy with someone who, you know, a liberal I-5 corridor elected just wouldn't have access to, it really benefits all of us. So, it's been heartening to see the commitment across all of the participants and that effort from around the state, and I sure agree that we're much stronger when we're all together.
Thank you.
I'm glad. Do you have anything?
Yeah, just, I've mentioned this before, and I appreciate you coming down today and bringing this issue forward, and I've spoken on it a couple times, and I appreciate the efforts to try to keep all the counties together. I'm really frustrated with King County. I really see it as a tantrum. I really see it as a tantrum from, you know, the most powerful county, biggest county in our state, that is frustrated that they don't maintain their normal status for excessive power. That's really how I see this issue. You know, and as far as the dues, that's, you know, I think their dues were around a half a million a year. I guarantee you, they save way more than that every single year from the advocacy and effectiveness of WASAC in terms of, you know, stopping the unfunded mandates and such. So to me, it's been a really frustrating thing to watch unfold. I do agree with the direction that WASAC is moving, to try to mend it and, you know, try to keep them part of it. But to me, it's equity, you know, the system was equitable, you know, the same dollar amount per head, you know, per county. And, you know, they're pushing for a less equitable system, in my opinion. So, but I appreciate you coming down here today. I appreciate all that WASAC does, you know, all the informational emails that we get from WASAC are very helpful, and just appreciate all that you do. Thanks for coming down.
You bet, Councilmember. Thank you for your comments. And I agree, you know, it has been very frustrating for, I think, everyone in the organization and to, you know, the approach that King County has taken. And there's no doubt that it's been, that it's been difficult and frustrating. I am happy to say that we've had a very different experience with Snohomish and Pierce counties, given the level of concern that they share. They have been very productive and positive working partners to try and get at solutions. I think my own observation about King County is that we haven't had a lot of King County council members who have really been very involved in the organization or engaged in the organization. And this is something, you know, you've heard me talk about the value of the organization a couple of times. I think this is one of our biggest challenges with King County specifically, but with different counties over the course of time, is it's difficult to really see and experience the value of the association unless you participate. And that could be participating in LSC, it could be attending virtual assemblies, it could be, you know, going to trainings, you know, there are so many different ways to participate. If you do, it's pretty easy to experience the value. But if you don't participate, then it's very difficult to understand what the value of the organization is or to even be aware of it. So because there's such a distinction between the executive's office and the legislative branch in King County, you know, we're working very hard with both of those branches of government. They don't always, of course, see eye to eye, and it just makes for a little bit more complex, dynamic. However, we continue to think that if we can find a way to maintain an organization that is fair and equitable and involve King County, that that would be the ideal.
All right. So I guess the one person that participated in the Legislative Steering Meeting isn't here today, so that's unfortunate. But I want to give you a totally different perspective from what we've talked about today.
Excellent.
So first of all, when I sat down there, seeking, being interviewed by the council up here, I knew very little about county governance and even less about WASAC. Yet, a lot of my answers, because of my general experience in governance in different contexts around the world, I knew that sticking together was the right path when dealing with the legislature as a group lobby, if you will. So a lot of my answers included, well, we should rely on WASAC, we should talk to WASAC, we should get together on these issues that I was being questioned about as a prospective counselor. And I did, right away, start to participate in WASAC as a brand-new counselor and was pretty disappointed. And so the greatest danger I think we have in Washington State, along the whole West Coast, is groupthink, is one-party rule. You know, the whole tenet of the United States Constitution relies on separation of powers, a balance of powers, checks and balances. We have none of those. And that rears its ugly head in a lot of ways. And so a lot of that discussion came up during WASAC meetings. You know, there was just substantive discussion as if we were legislators, and it all had that one-party bent. So about the only thing that I saw positive was that, hey, well, at least we're united about unfunded mandates. We're all going to unite and fight those. So the initiative you're starting and doing with the Legislative Steering, kind of re-energizing and putting substance into that process, is the right path. Like Karen Bowerman, I mean, one of the things I wrote down right away to ask you about was, I'm sorry, we're enforcing state laws here. Every county has a jail. Every county may share a jail in a regional county. These are uniform issues that need legislation. We don't need more studies, we don't need standards to, and more oversight, which is about the only thing I saw coming out of the last legislative session. Luckily, that failed. But corrections is, and the intersection with mental health and addiction, is real, palpable, and every county is trying to deal with it. And when we're in a process of, we're in dire need of remodeling our jail. We have professional services, professional direction, but we need state funding. And every county has the same challenge. The fact that that did not make it to your legislative priorities, it was a grave disappointment and I think wrong-headed because it's universal, it's a universal need. Public defense and going to this one-party rule, you know, we had McLeary decision. It didn't fix anything, nothing. The Supreme Court as a super legislating body is not what they were intended to be. So whether it's tax reform, school funding, buyer district funding, the legislature needs to take that on. And it's going to rear its ugly head again with public defense. And it's more than just public defense. It's guardian ad litem, unrepresented litigants, it's a national issue, but it's also a statewide issue. And if we focus on funding, that's a wrong approach. If we allow the Supreme Court to dictate what case loads are going to be or how, because you will never be able to fund it. Are you going to fund, are you going to create law schools? Are you going to give scholarships to induce people to go to law school and then become prosecutor or a public defender? You know, so we need to, we need to tee up the issues, and they need to be broader and more inclusive. We all need to have a voice, even if we're a minority voice. We need to have that voice at WASAC to go to the legislature and say, do your jobs, fix this. Public defense is going to be a debacle, and it's going to, if we have to react, and that's the other part of this, having a legislative agenda is the way to do this. We can't just react to what bubbles up under one-party rule coming out of committee and just say, well, we're neutral, or we're opposed, or we're in favor of it. We need to have a legislative agenda to fix the things that need fixing. So that's a different focus than I think we're still in. And it kind of gets to our discussion before the meeting when I was talking about, hey, we don't even have lawyers.
Right.
Most counties in the country have their own lawyers that have an attorney-client relationship, that are loyal to the county commissioners or counselors, that don't have conflicts of interest. And this is a statewide issue that undergirds everything county government does, from contract formation, contract administration, you name it, defending in lawsuits. We need a traditional legal relationship with our own lawyers, and we don't have it. So anyway, so on the one hand, I do cheerlead your efforts because to try to keep the association together, to keep all the counties engaged, takes these efforts to legislative priorities. But I think we're still not quite there, and I'm hopeful that you will be there soon because I think it is a voice that the state needs, whether it's a minority vote or a majority vote. We have to get outside the bubble, we have to get outside the groupthink that is renowned in our Washington governance right now. And it's the biggest danger we face. So those are, I think, all the comments I have. You know, hopefully you'll get all the counties back in the fold at some point with a fair governance structure. And I know it's going to take really hard work, and I really directly personally thank you for stepping up. I know I have never volunteered. Every time we saw an opening, it's, hey, put your name in the hat for a leadership position. I said, no, talk to the hand, no thanks. So I appreciate that you have the willingness and the experience to make a positive change at WASAC. So you're on the right track, keep it up. Any last comments or questions before we go? We obviously want to encourage, we have a great policy assistant analyst, and we have a good relationship with our own lobbyists. We have a great relationship with our own legislative delegation. We don't want to go our own path. There is strength in unity, so we definitely want to press every advantage. I want to see jails back on the agenda. Let's see it happen.
You know, thank you very much for raising those. And on the jail, really on both those issues, I would say indigent defense remains our top priority broadly. Of course, we were extremely disappointed when the lawsuit was thrown out for lack of standing and were, I suspect that we're going to continue to pursue both legislative and legal avenues to try and effect some change there. So there's no doubt that that remains a top priority. And to be honest, I also would have preferred to see direct funding for jails in the last session. I had some consternation about the study versus just looking at dollars. The Capitol Budget Chair, Representative Theringer, is from my district, and he also bristled at the concept of the study and was not necessarily a fan of that. However, we don't always get exactly what we want from the legislature, and I think that that was what we were able to get in terms of looking at teeing up investments in infrastructure. And in the meantime, we've worked to focus on other jail-related issues where we're able to make some progress. So I just want to say I share at least some of those concerns and, you know, I think it just, I want to continue to encourage your ongoing participation in all of these conversations. It's important that Clark County be there to help shape those priorities and to make sure that we are focused on those adequately. So I really appreciate the feedback, and I really, again, I appreciate the time and your invitation to be here today.
Thank you so much again. Drive safely. I know you have a long drive.
Will do. Thank you all very much. That's a lot for the rest of your day.
And I think Oliver, you have the next work session? And Jenna? And Jose?